All right, it's six thirty. Special Town Board meeting order for June fourth, twenty nineteen. All right, first item of, uh, on the agenda, we need to approve the agenda. Patrick, is there any changes, additions?
No, sir, no additions.
All right, hearing none. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda for June fourth, twenty nineteen.
I'll second that.
Motion's made, second in all favor say aye.
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 Opposed, and motion carries. Item number four, we have no old business. So we're gonna move on to item number five, which is a public hearing for the... Oh, wow, oh, I'm sorry. Item number, yeah, we have no consent agenda also. So item number five, a public hearing, this is for street improvement, twenty nineteen dash three. With this being a public hearing, I need a motion to waive the reading, noting it's been properly published.
I'll move to waive the reading of notice that proper publication of the hearing was made in newspaper.
Second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Motion's made, second in all favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Then to get started, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Which means we will have our engineer give a, uh, a formal presentation. At the end of that, we'll open it for public comment. If you have any questions or comments, I need you to come up to the mic, state your name and address, and address your questions to whatever you've got. All right, all yours, Mr. Poplar.
Thank you, uh, I'm, again, I'm Larry Poplar. Many of you were at my meeting, the meeting last week. To add on to what our chair has spoke of, when you, if you are gonna speak, there is a sign-in sheet to get, to get, uh, the name and address correctly in the record. So it's right on that table behind you there. So the presentation I'm giving tonight is very similar presentation as last week. Just a few modifications for tonight. Um, the agenda or presentation is, uh, uh, similar. It's talking a little bit about the overall pavement management, for the township, the proposed improvements, feasibility study findings, mill and overlay process, costs, assessments, and then, uh, process and schedule before we get into the public portion. Again, we are trying to, the, the goal of our pavement management, we reviewed the entire township system last fall, and determined which areas need to be improvement. And we created a, a kind of five-year plan for improvements throughout the township. And, um, these areas, uh, that we're talking about tonight rose to the top because we're trying to get and catch these streets and do some improvements before they, they get, uh, to a point where the costs are more expensive to complete. So the, really, the overall goal is to try to ensure that we're completing the improvements, um, at the right time to minimize cost for the whole entire township and all the streets. And so, um, I have a, a bit of a slide here to kind of, or first of all, I want to talk a little bit about what affects degradation of a street and deterioration. The first two, poor drainage and soils beneath the street, are really the primary, um, root of, uh, of damage to a street. If, uh, if water isn't properly managed and removed from the street, it can seep through the cracks. And if the soil beneath the street is a clay material, um, that holds water, the freeze and thaw process moves material around underneath the street and causes cracks and, and breakage of the street. So those first two are really important in, in terms of, uh, managing a street. Other items that affect degradation are the original construction, loading of the street, traffic volumes, that freeze and thaw process, as I mentioned, and utility impacts. So this is a slide I didn't show at our last meeting, but should, um, we talked about at the first meeting in February. But, um, since there was a number of new people at the last meeting, I thought I'd bring it back. And it, it, it's a, it's a little bit complicated slide, but I, um, wanna kind of walk you through it. So the Y-axis is a, uh, a street condition from a hundred percent down to zero percent. And the X-axis is years, number of years. So there's two tracks that are shown on this, on this life cycle chart for a street. And it kind of shows how a street degrades over time. The red, if we do nothing to a street, it degrades along a curve, and you may get twenty-five years out of the street if you do nothing to maintain that street. Certainly by a twenty-five to thirty percent, um, uh, point in the, in the road life, it's, it's pretty bad. You're at potholes, lots of cracking, and you start to hear that things need to be improved. When things, when you, if you follow that curve and you do not do proper maintenance or do not do overlay, mill and overlays at the right time, you, you have to do that costly improvement to replace everything, basically, to, um, bring it back up to a, a hundred percent. Now, the blue line is showing the maintenance activities that we would want to do to try to get between fifty and sixty years of life out of a street. And so if we, if we start at year zero, three to five years, we're doing a, a, a seal coat that protects the surface and a cra, and any crack sealing, which seals that surface. You do it again, maybe at year nine, and then you kind of wait until you have, uh, more of a twenty-year life, you know, fifteen to twenty years, and then you might do a mill and overlay to bring it up again. But you're not bringing it all the way up because there's degradation beneath that surface a little bit. You do another series of seal coats and crack sealing, and another perhaps mill and overlay to try to extend that life and try to get the most life out of that initial investment. Because that initial investment in, in digging out soils and putting in base and concrete curb and gutter is by far the co, most costly component of street improvement. So if we can catch these streets before they get bad enough, do some mill and overlays are, are much cheaper in the long run. If, and if you follow the blue tract versus the red tract, it can save the township as much as thirty percent. So that's really the overall goal in the, the program in trying to, um, do improvements for the township at the right time. So using kind of that thought process and the evaluation of the entire township, these projects, or these areas rose to the top for twenty nineteen. They include, including the Hobie area, Park View, Park View Drive, Fenway Court, the Weston Woods area, Moonlight Court, and Gilflyn Court, and White Bear Parkway, um, east of Oak Bean. So that, we completed a feasibility study of all these areas, and this is kind of a breakdown of what the report talks about. The, it gives a little background, existing conditions, proposed improvements, uh, public input with, uh, with the questionnaires that were sent out, project funding, estimated costs, estimated assessment amounts, and funding sources for the project, a schedule, and conclusions and recommendations. And so I want to talk a little bit about each area. So Park View area was constructed in the mid nineteen nineties. It has concrete curb and gutter. And the township rates their streets on a zero to five rating scale. And for this, for this, uh, neighborhood, the ratings were as low as two point two-six. What does that mean? Typically, if you're below two point two, um, you're looking at more costly improvements. Between two point two in general to three point two-five, you're looking at that mill and overlay. You're in that category. And so with this neighborhood and the other neighborhoods tonight, we're trying to get and catch these roadways before they get into a more, more costly category in the future. So we're proposing a mill and overlay for Fenway and, uh, Park View Court. Or Park View Drive. Park View Court was evaluated, and that area was determined it was too far gone to do a mill and overlay. So they were gonna, they're gonna have to incur a, a larger improvement at a later date. Um, the Weston Wood, Woods area, constructed in the late nineteen nineties. Again, we had ratings as low as two point two-six. Um, it has existing concrete curb and gutter. And we're looking at mill and overlay of, of Weston Woods and Moonlight Court. And Gilflyn is a, um, a short segment of roadway that the pavement thickness is, isn't thick enough for, uh, a mill and overlay. So we're looking at, um, replacing the pavement there. White Bear Parkway, constructed nineteen ninety-eight. Their rate at that mark, two point two is their rating. Has existing concrete curb and gutter. A mill and overlay is proposed. We originally thought because of, um, the visual aesthetic that it might be something more than a, a mill and overlay. But, um, cores were taking, taken of the pavement on all these streets. And it was determined that the core, um, density and, uh, condition was, was, was good. It was thick, and we're really looking more for a mill and overlay now and, and a, a less costly repair, which is good news. Um, there are residential, as well as commercial industrial properties along this stretch roadway. And, um, we can talk a little bit more about the assessments, uh, later, but there's also White Bear Township property that's, uh, developable, that's a part of the, um, assessment, uh, number of units. The Hobie area, constructed in two thousand and six. The ratings, two point nine-three. But what really caught our eye with this one is the pace of degradation. Since two thousand and six, it is degrading, um, at a, a, a bit swifter pace than we would expect. And we want to catch and do improvements before, um, and before it gets, it's, before it gets worse. This project in two thousand and six was a, a sewer and water project that, um, we're digging deep. And there have been some settlements, it appears, with, uh, that project. We are looking at an edge mill and overlay that can add some thickness to the roadway and extend that life of that initial investment. So I want to talk a little bit about the mill and overlay process. Most of these areas have concrete curb and gutter. So, um, the first step in the process is to remove cracked or settled concrete curb and gutter. And so they come in and cut out segments that are, are damaged, and they're, they're replaced. We would also do some minor utility repairs, and that, that means some, um, adjustment of the, uh, valves and manholes, replacing rings underneath the, the castings of the catch basins to, um, make sure they're, they're watertight. We also would do signage evaluation, sightlines, look at sightline issues. If there's a concrete repair in a, along a driveway, there would be driveway restoration with that. But, um, one thing I wanted to mention was if there is concrete work in front of your driveway, we need that concrete to cure for a period of five days before you can drive on it. And so hopefully, most repairs are, are not a full driveway, and you can get around the, the repair with the other half of your driveway. If it is a full driveway repair of the curb, then we'll have to work with you on, on access, whether they, um, look at pouring it at half at a time or if, uh, if you're able to, to step over the curb. You know, if, if, if that's a possibility, um, that's, that's a better product if we can pour it all at once. So, but we can, we'll work with property owners on that when that time comes. Once the, the driveways are restored and the curb and gutter is, is repaired, then they mill and they grind off an inch and a half to two and a half inches of the pavement. And underneath that is an, is another layer of pavement that they're, they're building another, the new layer on top of. And when that's, that's ground down, they would sweep it and, uh, blow out the cracks and seal the cracks, and then they pave over, um, with the new inch and a half to two and a half inch, um, new batuminas. If, if your curb repair is in your yard, they would then come back and restore the top soil and sod. So I have a couple pictures here. This is a, a, the, what, a picture on the left is a picture of, uh, the concrete curb repair and actually the catch basin repair, where we're making that, that, uh, catch basin watertight again. And, uh, we're repairing that curb and gutter around it. The picture on the right is kind of the, the paving process. And you can see below, below the truck is that other layer of batuminas below the upper layer. And that's what they're, they're paving back, um, with the process. These are some more pictures of that paving process, and to the right is the rolling, um, compaction of the, of the pavement. And you can, you can see also on the right, there was some curb that was replaced. And you can see how, about how far back they get to replace that. It's about eighteen inches to two feet. All right, getting into the costs. We evaluated the, the four different areas, and in total, with all four areas, about a one point one five million dollar project. You can see the breakdown per area. We also evaluated assessment options. And we evaluated at a hundred percent assessment, assessing all the costs other than the, um, the cost for the utilities, uh, water sewer and storm sewer. We assess, we looked at the assessment of seventy-five percent of the cost, and we looked at assessment of fifty percent of the cost. And you can see the numbers on what that would mean for each area if they were separated out. The town board has preliminary discussed a three thousand dollar assessment across all these projects. And really, if, if it does go that route and it's a three thousand dollar assessment, that assessment is, uh, if, if you don't pay it down or pay it off, it would go on your taxes for a period of ten years, at a principal of about three hundred dollars a year, plus interest for that year. These are the properties in red that we are looking, um, to be part of the assessment. You can see the, the variety of different parcel sizes. You can see on, on White Bear Parkway, you see a, a number of different sized parcels. You have the residential properties along this stretch, and you have commercial industrial in this area. For White Bear Parkway, there's, uh, nine residential properties. And when you equate the frontage for White Bear Parkway for the commercial industrial, that makes up forty-one units, um, for the remainder of White Bear Parkway. Most other areas are, are residential. There is a, a unit up, uh, a couple of units up on Weston Woods, near Moonlight Court, that are assessed, uh, for commercial, um, multiple units. So when we brought these, uh, costs and, and computed the assessments, we brought these into a different funding tables. You can see a fifty percent assessment funding table, seventy-five percent of assessment funding table, a hundred percent, uh, percent assessment funding table. And then I, I added a slide here for a three, the three thousand preliminary assessment, and what that would mean for total assessments, total township funds, water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer funds. So the, the project process includes, uh, um, the feasibility study, some of the meetings we've already held. The public hearing tonight is a, a prelude to ordering, officially ordering the project. Once that project is ordered, then it can come back with, when plans are complete, to approve the plans and would go out for bid. And, um, that bid would come back to the town board for review and approval. And then we, we'd start construction. This is a slide that kind of shows that process, very hard to see, I understand. But it shows the many steps needed, um, for a project like this to follow the state statutes. The, the red is staff activities or town engineer activities. The blue are communication elements. And the green are all township board approval steps. So tonight, we're at the public hearing. If, if, uh, the project is ordered, we'd bring back plans. We plan to bring back plans on June seventeenth for approval so we can get it out to bid as soon as possible. Opening bids in July sometime, um, and, and begin construction in early August. Later in September and October is when assessment, final assessment number was, would be, um, computed and evaluated by the town board. And then there's another hearing, um, for the public if, to speak or contest the assessment at that time. And it's gonna be roughly in October sometime. You will be noticed. We're also looking at completion of the construction in October. A lot of the information that, uh, the presentations we've given, the feasibility report, the preliminary report on pavement, on the pavement for the overall township is located on the website. If you follow the, if you look at the website, there's a scrolling screen in green there. And when it gets to township projects, click on that, and you'll find, you can navigate your way to the twenty nineteen projects or the overall pavement, um, program. When construction does occur, there will be a newsletter that will provide contact information, emergency contact information, preliminary schedule of the contractor, and as much information as we can communicate ahead of time, um, to you about the project. Of course, as the project is occurring, we'll have an inspector out there. And if there's individual concerns, uh, for property, um, individual questions, that person's enabled beyond the, on the newsletter, and you can contact them to set up a meeting. So the steps tonight, um, the next steps are to open the public hearing and take, take your feedback, take your comments. And then the board would deliberate and decide whether to order the improvement, um, tonight. A unanimous vote is needed. All three need to vote in favor of it to order the project. So that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chair, and I'd be happy to answer any questions either now or when, when people have, have them.
All right, well, at this time, does the board have any questions, Larry?
No.
All right, hearing none, then I would look for a motion to open up the public comment portion.
I'll move to open the public comment portion. I'll second.
Motion's made, second, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, folks, like I said, if you've got any comments or questions, call Larry. Uh, the mic there, your name and address, just so we keep a record of anybody who's got some concerns.
Tom, five eight seven eight Hobie Lane. On the assessment summary slide, can you get back to that? Where the three thousand preliminary assessment was thought about? And in the last meeting, we had a discussion about Hobie Lane is just slightly over three thousand per home or per unit. The other ones are almost twice. So why would everyone pay three thousand? Wouldn't it be more pro-rated? So that was the question last time, that hopefully it percolated up.
Yes, so certainly it'd be a board decision to, um, change that perhaps. There is a little less work with Hobie Lane, because it's ad mill and overlay. But overall, um, the improvements are similar. It's a, it's an overlay. The R, the board is, um, reducing the amount for all cata, all properties. But, um, it's, uh, it's really up to the board if they, if they chose to reduce that. But again, the, the, the town board doesn't need to make that decision tonight. We can get bids, we can evaluate what, um, the costs are, are really coming in at, and then they can make that decision in, in October.
And it all depends too, now, this time of the year, uh, I know everybody's busy. So when, when we do finally get the bids, we can kind of see where we're getting, we're gonna have a better handle on this assessment process.
Yeah, I just thought, you know, that to give everybody in the audience an, at least an idea of what we're looking at as a global assessment for property, some might be different, we haven't determined that yet.
Sylvia, has seven seven nine Gilflyn Court. Couple of questions for you. Our little court is just a stub of a street. There's only twelve homes on it, so it gets very little traffic. And it is in evidently dire straits because not only mill and overlay, but now a rebuild, which I just heard for the first time tonight after looking at these materials. Before, earlier this winter, I saw materials where it said it was gonna be mill and overlay. Now, if there's not thick enough base to do the mill and overlay, wouldn't that be an indication that it wasn't built properly to start with?
Well, the, the base beneath the pavement is, is, is solid. It's, it's pretty thick. I looked at that again after the, the meeting last week. What is odd about Gilflyn is they only paved two inches, at least in the quarter we took. When we, when we get into it, if we, if we do another, we get into, to doing the pavement removal and we find that there is more pavement, maybe it will go back to a mill and overlay. But based on the, the coring information we have, it was a two-inch. So, um, township standard is three to three and a half inches of pavement, so you can do a mill and overlay in the future. In this case, it only added a two-inch, in this area at least.
Which I understand, and I wouldn't want you to do a mill and overlay if it's not done correctly. But that en, doesn't answer my question, is wasn't done correctly to start with.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the factors were involved with why it was two inches. It doesn't seem normal to do that.
And none of the board were there then? Dale wasn't there then? I know a lot of the people weren't there then, but that doesn't lay our fears that when that developer was allowed to do this, and I don't know when the developer does a section like that, who does the streets? Does the developer pay for it and the city, the township do it and hire the contractor? And the inspector to see that it's done correctly and that the specs are correct?
Yeah, so the normal process now, and I don't know what the process was back then, is, is that the developer, um, would pay for the improvements, the township would hire the contractor and inspect.
Does anybody know what happened then? Because that question was asked last week, I know.
Larry, how many, how many core samples were taken?
There was one core sample taken on.
So it's, maybe it's possible just that one spot for some reason got, was too thin.
Well, true, true, but still, then that shouldn't, it shouldn't be done mill and overlay, even if there's a small area, because then it's going to deteriorate. My, our, a problem is, in our area, is that's, those streets have been deteriorating rapidly over the first ten, twelve years of their life. And, uh, up until a couple of years ago, when, uh, uh, the town came and did a really great job of repairing and did a nice rollout and such a repairing, they were in terrible straits. Now they're not too bad. But we've always felt that they weren't done correctly because of the way they looked so bad and that they looked like they were falling apart. It would be nice if somebody would go back and dig out historical information so that history doesn't repeat itself. That's the way we prevent mis, mistakes happening if we know what history is. Another thing I wanted to add is, um, we just replaced all our concrete streets in the association of, of... Driveways. Thank you. And we, when we started that project, we contacted the township asking about the, the, uh, cracked, uh, gutters. And we suggested that maybe the company that was doing our side, our driveways could do that repair then to save damaging our, our driveways later. It wasn't done, and now we have brand-new driveways that were just done last summer, and you're gonna come in and rip up the street. And we're afraid for our costly new driveways.
Well, that's unfortunate. Any, any driveways that are impacted by curb removal and replacement would be saw cut and repaired. But you do have, would have a seam in that driveway, either the concrete or they...
Concrete.
Concrete, okay.
One year old.
Okay.
This, we're not even old, not even a whole year, because they were just done last summer. And what, when you say that was unfortunate, that does not make us feel real good.
Well, it, it, I, it's better that it's concrete, actually, because, um, you know, I, the, the look will match better than having a seam in a batuminous driveway.
It's, it still won't match. I, I, you didn't make that decision, and it's unfortunate that it was made that way. But just so that everybody understands that all these actions have consequences and, and we're, we're supposed to be happy homeowners. And, uh, don't get me wrong, I'm a very big proponent of the township and try to support them as much as I can. But there are a few things that have irritated me over the years. Thank you. Thank you.
I would ask maybe, Dale, do you know, can a licensed concrete even replace our curb and gutter, or is that something that's not allowed in the township? Usually in a right-of-way like that, the township has to do any repairs or replacements.
On the driveways, they can permit with the town on the replacement, which I'm assuming the contractor did.
But I mean, they wouldn't have, would we give them the right to replace the curb and gutter at the same time? Or is that some township would be required?
That's not what we were asking. We were asking the township.
No, but you were asking when they did the driveway, if they could have done the curb and gutter.
What we were asking is when they did the driveway, would the township not hire them to fix any broken curb and gutter?
Oh, okay.
That's what we were asking. It would be just another contractor. It would make a difference if it's the contractor that makes the bids now or the contractor.
I understand. Okay, thanks, Dale. All right, any other questions, comments? Going ones?
My name is Larry Waldock, and I live at 2597 Parkview Drive. And I'm here just to say that I think a good job has been done in planning this procedure for our road. I don't know anything about the rest of them. And I'm just extremely anxious to see it go through and fix our road with the way Larry Poplar has described that they're going to do. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Well, the board appreciates that because there's a lot of work that went into this whole process, and we're, this is our first year of implementing a whole new, pretty much a whole new scheme for the township, so to try to stay ahead of all this stuff.
Yeah.
We appreciate it, though.
Okay, well, we certainly appreciate what you're doing and what Larry is doing, too. So thank you.
All right, anyone else? Last chance? All right, I guess I would be looking for a motion to close public hearing.
I'll move to close the public portion of the hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, at this point, since there's no other questions of the board, Larry, you have any more comments? I would be looking for a motion to approve the resolution ordering improvement 2019-3.
Well, I'll move based on tonight's neighborhood meeting and feedback, the town engineer and staff review and recommendations, adopt the resolution ordering improvements of 2019-3.
Motion's been made.
I'll second that.
And through the session? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That's an unanimous decision. So we're moving on. Item number six, we have no new business. Number seven, we have no added agenda. Item number eight, this is open time, if anybody has any other comments or questions concerning township business, now would be time to ask. Hearing none. Item number nine, I need a motion to receive agenda materials and supplements.
I'll move to receive agenda materials and supplements.
Second?
I'll second that.
Motion's made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? That motion also carries. Item number 10, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned at 7:04. Thanks, folks.